Thank you all very much. Yep, have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Yes. Good evening all and welcome to the City of North Plains City Council Regular Session Meeting Monday, May 6th, 2024 at 7:01. Please stand for eight. Thank you. Mayor Linehan, Mayor Counselor Bage,
Mayor Counselor Himmel,
Mayor Counselor Nathan,
Mayor
Counselor Sheldon,
President.
Counselor Smith, Mayor, and Counselor Martinez is excused this evening. Great, thank you very much Lori, I appreciate that. Our consent agenda, we have a few items on our consent agenda. The approval of the May 6th regular city council agenda, the approval of April 15th, city council minutes, proclamation May 5th through May 11th, municipal clerks week, and the proclamation for May mental health awareness. And any corrections to the minutes that we need to be aware of?
So.
Do you have a person or second? Any discussion? All those in favor say a hi. Anything opposed, say nay. I want to bring the proclamation for the May mental health awareness to the floor just for a few minutes to introduce a resident here in North Plains who was actually together. Shouted with her a few times, and she is in North Plains as well. Her name is Sarah Kelly, but we asked her to come this evening and just give a few minutes. Tell us a little bit about yourself, whether you want to elevate you and your cause, and I'm hoping that you come up and just share that in just a few minutes. Yeah, come on up to the table and just state your name and address for the record. Make sure you speak into the mics and folks on the Zoom call area, okay?
I'm Sarah Kelly and I live here in North Plains on K-3 Court. I'm on a mission to kind of normalize mental health. I have like a debilitating panic disorder. It happened about a year and a half ago. I didn't leave my house and I was kind of isolated and I just go to the doctor because I thought I had every road disease. Yeah, I slowly got out of my shell and then step by step I started leaving my house. I walked to my mailbox. It took me about six months to go through McDonald's and start driving again. So then I eventually joined the Mrs. Oregon American Pageant System and that really helped me get out of my shell and create the group here in North Plains. So nobody could feel alone like I did and we always have support. And yeah, we meet every Monday. We're just kind of friends that are there for each other and I just don't want anyone to feel alone in their mental health journey. So yeah, that's a little bit about me and I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to make some new friends. And I've also just got my certificate in adult mental health peer support. Super stoked about that. I'm just waiting for the Oregon Health Authority to approve my background check. So I'm registered with the state.
I think that is so awesome. I just want to say how great you are. I'm looking forward to today where you were, where you were today. And I think it's really important, you know, to acknowledge that with you. Can you, if folks want to know how to connect with you, what's the best way? How can you do that?
Sure. So I have Facebook, Sarah Kelly. I'm not sure. Like it just has that Sarah Kelly in North Plains or the Washington County Comfort Community Group. Instagram, I'm not too sure how to come on there very much, but I do have a account. I'm not sure. Just Sarah Kelly, so.
Well, and I think it's the group that I, the Washington County Comfort Group, that's the one I was really interested in.
Oh, yes, yes. Washington County Comfort Community is on Facebook and we can also connect on there just through boards and talk to each other. And so I'm hoping to grow it more and more too. So yeah.
Any questions or comments for Sarah?
Question?
Sure.
How many people do you have already? How many people?
Um, so.
Who do you have coming to your door now or by chance? Does the work's gotten tough for you?
Yeah, so including me, the group, there's about 63 people.
Really?
Yeah, but I'm hoping to grow it more and more. I know that there's other resources down there. Like I learned about KME too. They do groups in the evenings and stuff. I saw an anxiety one come open on August. I'm like, is that what people are doing now?
Do you find parking is a problem in putting your house around? Is that where you're at? Oh, okay. Okay. That's a great asset to have here in North Plains.
Same to.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Goodnight, Lori. Thank you for being here and sharing your story. And I hope folks are listening or if they do listen to this, then they need the support that they can show.
Thank you for having me. Everybody's welcome to join the Comfort Community.
Thank you. Next up, we have public comment. It looks like two folks have. Lori, actually, before I call the folks in the room, is there anyone online or has anything submitted via email? No, not for me. Sounds great, Nikki. Claire, Basukas? I'm so sorry. It's a hard name. Okay. So if you would just make sure that you do speak in the line and then say your name and address.
858 Turrell Drive.
People, call your phone here.
30858 Northwest Turrell Drive. We recently moved, so I'm really nervous to be here too. We recently moved to this area, my husband and I, and neither disabled, an Air Force veteran coping with PTSD.
It's okay. Take your time. Take your time.
He's coping with PTSD and several related disabilities. About two years ago, on a therapist-designed activity, we started going to animal therapy and noticed a positive change since I moved to North Plains. We're quite far from that location and have been considering getting emotional support animal ourselves. While the animal would mostly be indoors and at work with my partner, we felt that we still needed to ask permission as some of the regulations on EFA animals seemed unclear. When we started looking to obtain an EFA animal, we noticed that the animal question, a miniature goat, was allowed in Washington County as a whole, but not within the city of North Plains as they are considered a livestock animal and the city prohibits certain livestock. Currently, the city does not seem to have a place to inquire about EFA animal notifications and we're wondering if that might change since there could be a way for a therapist to petition or perhaps seek a permit or obtain a specialty license.
I think, I thank you for bringing them to our attention. That'd be. Chickens were the only thing that we have listed. Actually, I've been allowed a whole livestock animal in the city limits. And this is really the first topic ever to my attention in the last 16 years. And I conferred with the longest-standing counselor and he conferred that he has that issue completed as well. So I think it's something that maybe we can take a look at, obviously, just not navigating it. So I think if you would allow, I think Steve has your contact information, Steve. Your contact information. And you know, it's something that we can look at. Certainly can't promise anything, but I think it's fair just to at least see what the ramp might be if anything. And then I could certainly just ask Steph, you know, Steve, contact you and take it from there. Well, that's.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Glenn Moore.
I'm Glenn Moore, 10845 Northwest 3011. I'd like to talk about two different things. One is the park itself. At night, this park, Jesse Mays' park, the park at night is supposed to be closed. I call non-emergency because it's always not always. Sometimes violators are in there playing basketball or playing tennis because of that light. But they still think that it's there because it's a tiny little thing of when it's open, the desk is gone. And the police will drive right up by and they don't do anything. So that's one thing. The other thing is the pickleball. The pickleball is noisy. I know in Hillsborough, they re-did a lot of their parks. I'm not asking to do anything like that. I'm asking the council to consider putting noise prevention up. That's little slats in between the fence to maybe defer the noise of going outward. They'll might go upward and wouldn't bother the residents. And that's why I came to that, that should maybe the police, the park looked better if the police are here. And maybe preserve a little noise.
Is the noise at night or is it during the daytime?
There, there's been, their light is 2:30 at night. And I call the non-emergency. I shouldn't be the one that's always complaining about it. They should do their job if they're on duty, but they drive right up and they don't bother them. They probably think that they don't bother anybody by their jobs. So they're trying to sleep and it's, it's very annoying. It's like a parking lot. In a basketball or pickleball.
So is the noise at night because of the vision?
Yeah, yeah, it's at night. Sometimes the kids are just underneath the cover there. And by the way, that needs to be washed or something has got wet. So the maintenance. But yeah, it's all different types. It's actually the about seven or eight different people just continue to, you know, coming up. And I don't want to confront them with a high cost to save your park.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Anyone else for public comment?
Someone on the air, like there is their head.
Ariel. Could you please say your name and address for the record? You're muted.
Ariel, you're muted.
You're muted?
You're muted. You're muted.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Ariel, you're muted. We can't hear you.
There's no audio.
Yeah, I do. Super good, Eric Christian.
Teresa, Counselor Nathan, can you say something please and just check that?
Yeah, Ariel, I'm not sure if you can hear the city council at Jesse Mays, but we can't hear your audio at all. We still can't hear it. I don't know. Mayor Linehan, maybe we can pause and give Ariel a moment to log out and log back in to provide public comment? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Awesome, just like a Verizon commercial. Okay, my name's Ariel Goodwin and my address is 30845 Northwest Brookin Court. And I've got comments on several areas. First of all, unfortunately, the Zoom links to multiple recent meetings have been posted incorrectly, leading to individuals being unable to access, which is their right. We need the city to do better and ensure this doesn't happen again or really honestly, it could be viewed as disenfranchisement. I'm also calling out the conflict of interest that we have regarding the sign code, given that the Planning Commission includes Stewart, who has been placing the majority of the Yes for North Plains signs and is an active sponsor of the Yes campaign. So would not be reasonably considered impartial, leading to unequal application of the sign code. Rubber stamping the proposed amendments by the Planning Commission did not integrate community feedback from the Planning Commission meeting where the community specifically requested clearly defined appropriate signage in residential properties, preventing future prejudice from the city removing signs they don't like. For example, you know, Terry's probably not a fan of the signs in my yard saying to vote no. And we need the code to be revised so that it includes required warnings with substantial waiting periods, removal by the city only with specifically listed reasonable charges the Planning Commission had thrown out. You know, perhaps $5 is an amount. And the absolutely need to remove the use of property liens for unpaid fees. It's utterly inappropriate that there would ever be a situation where a resident of North Plains has a lien put on their house because the city didn't like their sign. I'm asking the city also to remain engaged with their constituents by not removing the commentability on their social media posts. In addition, the process for posting the meetings with their agenda so late, basically the day of, and then expecting public comments to be submitted prior, is not designed to encourage community participation. The agenda needs to be publicly available with a minimum of 48 hours for written response to be submitted. Most working families with kids can't attend these sessions based on the times and reasonable access needs to be provided. Thanks so much, everyone. I appreciate your help and your service.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right. Moving on, 8A is our presentation with the TPS, our Walton Valley Fire Rescue Group. I didn't know if you were all coming up or just one. So we need more chairs.
Now I'm going to let them introduce themselves, but I'll start off here. Hello, my name is Stephen Myers. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. My name's Stephen Myers. I'm Public Area Manager for Walton Valley Fire Rescue. It's my honor to provide you the state of the district for Walton Valley Fire Rescue. Before I get into that, I do want to have Lieutenant Messen bring introducing himself. He's from Organist Station 17. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. And today, this is C I D driver, Eric Dick. In your frame of love and very 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 powerful.
I also want to introduce Corinne Pan, who's here to join us for the city district as well. And then also I understand you guys have a packed agenda. So I'm going to be thoughtful of your time and try to move through things really quickly. But if you need to stop me and ask questions, please do so, otherwise I'm happy to answer that. So I'm going to do next slide. We have a video that includes our fire chief. He passes on his appreciation for North Plains. He's at a conference right now filling in, but we're going to talk a little bit about what our year's been and the major emergency operations we went into, EMS in the area, our bond, and then a measure that we have for voters on May 21st. So if you want to skip forward two slides, skip the, there's one more for that. So I don't know if anybody remembered, but we had a little bit of an ice and snowstorm hit our home. And for us, what I just wanted to highlight quickly was the fact that this really tested our organization. What you see before you is the blue line is the average number of calls that we see in our fire district each day. Right there is Saturday when the snowplagues started falling and you can see we tripled our call volume in one day. And that meant we went into a mode called major emergency operations mode. We have not done this in my career and in the others' career in which basically we had more calls than we could send resources to. So we stood up our fire operations center. We sent a liaison to dispatch. We essentially, you know, made sure to triage the calls that we were getting for life safety and making sure we could take care of people and then put the others into a queue that we worked to get to. Some of them were water problems, couldn't shut off water, but others were our major calls in which we have fires and cardiac arrest that we still need to get to. So as you can see over a five-day period, we had 2,300 calls. And again, it really tested us as to all the things you train for coming to bear to see if you can actually have the capacity to reach peak volume. And for us, that certainly was a huge challenge. I'm really proud to say that we met that challenge and called or responded to. We activated a lot of resources to respond to this. We also worked with utility providers to help have them go to some of those calls that they could help with and assist with like water shut offs that we could then make sure our firefighters were available for major calls that were involved in life saving. So next slide. Then I want to get into North Plains here. And what you see is a snapshot of the city of North Plains. I do want to point out, as we're playing cards, the crew said, make sure we know like exactly, this is not just the amount of calls that they go on that you're seeing here. This is just within the city limits. The reality is they respond to hundreds and hundreds more calls as they respond also to the rural area, right, where we have even more challenging situations where they have to bring water on fires and respond over distances. But what you're seeing here is a snapshot of last year. And within the city limits, there was 249 calls. You'll see a lot of those are EMS in nature. That's the reality of our business. But the difference here that you see at the top is dispatched as is what somebody calls 911 with. Situations found is what we actually encountered once we got there. The difference between those can be as simple as on a cold day, somebody calls 911 saying, I see smoke coming out of the back of a home. We arrive and we find that a dryer vent is exhausting out the back. So there's, that goes into the intended column as someone thought there's emergency and they were doing the right thing to notify us, but it wasn't necessarily a fire. But data is important to us. This is what we use to cite resources and determine where we need to be to respond as quickly and effectively as possible. And you can see there's a wide variety of calls that we respond to, not only EMS fire, but also hazardous materials, technical rescues, and our water rescue team throughout the district. For North Plains here, you get one red dot, which on the heat map there shows exactly where our calls are occurring and what frequency. So we do respond quite a bit to the apartment complex over there because there's lots of people living together. But otherwise, it's pretty spread out over the area. We also even track time of day. So at the bottom, you'll see exactly each hour when we're seeing calls on average. Again, that helps with staffing and with resource considerations. And then finally, you'll see kind of the trend over five years. Reality for us is over the last five years, we've seen a 17% increase in call volume. That continues to rise as we have growing population, but also as our demographics change. As our demographics change and people age, that tends to generate more EMS calls. So we're seeing that steady rise over time. The only link you have is from 2020 when nobody really wanted this in their homes. They might not understand why. So that would be the only one, but we should be proud that here at Station 17, they're responding to most of your calls and do want to highlight again the amount of area that they cover in responding to fires and emergencies throughout this region. Well, next slide. You may have seen in the news some information about EMS. A lot of it centered around Walton County, but we thought it'd be apt to make sure you knew what was happening in your county, in your area. And over the past year, we have seen improvements in the EMS system, which are really important to us as for a while, we were seeing level zeros occurring in which no private ambulance was available for transport. That was a huge strain on our system. And what we did is we worked with county and private providers to say, we need to improve this system. It's not serving our patients effectively. That yielded a process in which the private provider was looked at. We now have a new provider that's providing service for Washington County. And just in case you don't know or for the public watching, a private provider selected by the county to respond to the incident with us and then transport the individual from that location to hospital or further care. In this area, like I said, AMR is now serving within this area and we've seen an improvement in the response reliability of that group. We also though need to be prepared and if our local option levy is successful in May, we're going to be adding transport units to our system as we still do transport work in Yankton County. And we're the backup provider in Washington and Clackamas County with units under it. I also want to bring one other thing to your attention of EMS and that's the reality we face of high users. So we have individuals that in 2023, for instance, we had 99 patients who called 911 10 times or more throughout the year. That generated 1,500 calls for us. That's a lot. And it meant about 841 hours of care that we're providing to these individuals. A lot of times they need other services besides EMS, but they can't get access to them. So we're their primary care provider when they're in trouble. They need 911. So we've been working to do a pilot program in which we send a single paramedic that's trained and resources that they can bring to bear to support that person. Because maybe they need housing, food, social services, mental health services, but they're not finding access to it. So we have people that are getting trained as community paramedics to go out and connect them with what they need. Hopefully then keeping our heavy assets, our engines and other resources that we need available to our public. So they're still our patients. We want to do the right thing by them and take care of them. But that's a challenge we're facing and wanted to share with you some solutions we're trained to implement on board that. Next slide. In 2021, we were fortunate to have the public supportive bond measure. That bond, we've been now working through with projects and we've had, for instance, Station 17 is on the list for being renovated. But we also have some other projects that are really important for our fire district as a whole. Next slide. One of them is at our training center. Our training center hasn't really changed in a long time. And it looks the same for anybody that worked here in the 90s as it does today. And we need some updates there because we are training at least four academies right now each year. That's firefighters and paramedic only. So we have a real need there for increase in infrastructure and resources for them. So we're looking at a thing called Recruit Village. That's what we're calling it. And it's essentially a building in which our recruits can be housed, trained, have classrooms, and have indoor spaces that they could train at, which is really nice for when we have heat, when we have cold weather, when we have a lot of even regulations around heat exposure now laws that we have to abide by, now we can be more efficient and effective with our training if we're, as we build this structure. So that's one of the bond projects we're using to update our training center. Next slide. Final thing I wanted to lead you with, you can be already aware, but here on the ballot in May, May 21st, our current local option levy, which expires in 2025 or June. our current local option levy, which expires in 2025, or June 2025, is currently at 45 cents. Our board of directors has decided that based on our increased call volume and needs over the next decade, that that should be increased to 69 cents. So that's what we're putting before voters to consider. So that is going to be what they're seeing in May. And for the average resident, assessed property is around $305 within our fire district. Again, assessed value versus what we see on silo is different, and the assessed at 305 means that the average taxpayer would pay about $210 per year is what that local option levy. And that's important to us with the levy because that pays for at least 92 firefighter positions at its current rate. And what we project is with the additional revenue, we could have 36 more firefighters added. That helps us get to res- calls more quickly and improves our response reliability. So it's a critical need for our fire district, and we appreciate voters considering it.
Are you seeing an increase in recruitment interest for that?
For the...
To be a firefighter?
Yeah, we have seen a dip. The reality is we used to have hundreds and hundreds of applicants every cycle. That number has gone down drastically. There's a bunch of different factors in that, specifically in paramedics. Their paramedic schools were shut down during COVID, so there's a lag of paramedics to come into the system. And our numbers are still low. We'd like to see them get higher. We're trying to get the word out what an amazing career it is to consider being a firefighter.
Responses are the EMS base. If you're in the US-based staff. We have one or two US people that... Staffing as far as... Who do you have on duty? Is everybody EMS trained and people specialize in fire? Is EMS the basis and then fires different than the higher level or is that why?
Yeah, so every firefighter is trained to a basic level of EMT at least. And then on each engine, we have at least one paramedic. So that means they can provide advanced life safety care. So every unit within Twalton Valley can respond as an ALS unit. In addition to that, we do have paramedic onlys. Those are, they're not trained in firefighting, but they are specifically paramedics trained for EMS response. And they can be on our medics that respond in the transport units. And then further, we have single role, or we have a single unit responses, like the one I was talking about with our pilot. So we try to be dynamic in how we respond, so each call doesn't need a full engine response. But the reality is we need to be cross-trained to respond to a variety of challenges.
Is the hiring pipeline always somebody that applies at a college into the academy and gets a job? Or do they go to the private, ambulance, metro, or somebody, AMR? And then they get their, they get their chops in and they apply for the job? How's it really work? How's the pipeline?
Yeah, I think the answer to your question is there's such a variety of ways to come in to the fire service, and we're seeing that. Some people choosing it as a second career, and somebody that was recently in our academy came through a marketing, is what he was doing originally, and realized they want to go a different path. And then we have some that come right out of high school straight over to Schumachada or to one of our community colleges to get their EMT. And then they start working to do internships and volunteering. So there's a lot of pathways. And then we also, with that paramedic only, have tried to create a new pathway where maybe you're not a firefighter, but you're a paramedic, and you can come into TDFNR and figure out maybe eventually you're going to be trained by us to be a firefighter, or you could just stay as a paramedic. So we're trying to cast a wide net to attract those that may be interested in the career, but the tenants still apply that you have to be customer focused and taking care of our community. Excellent the job you do and expect a high level of service to be provided no matter what the cost.
And what about... Be a big, big thing. Is that something that's, you're getting a big... Firefighter part?
Yeah, nationwide, there's a shortage, and the numbers on volunteering keep going down. And so it's been a challenge for all departments, especially those that are around us that do rely heavily on volunteering. We still have volunteers, and there's three different ways in which they can work with us. So we have those that do respond, and right now they're even being trained up to help us more when the wildland areas, since we're seeing more wildfires and brush fires in the area. They can also be incident support volunteers, in which they respond and take blood pressures, change air bottles that firefighters wear, and provide rehabilitation for those that are working hard on the scene. And then we have those that don't want to respond. They get up in the middle of the night. So we have an auxiliary category where they help go to community events, educate the public, and take care of some of our antique fire apparatus.
Have you had quite a few years? Is that something that...
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think... Councilor, City Council and that, that asks questions.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so we try to do luncheons once in a while, inviting our city to come in and join us for lunch and see each other around. But we also do open houses. We found that the garlic festival is pretty popular here. So we now align our open house with that date, so we can get the maximum amount of people coming through. Because we want to see, we want to have taxpayers come see what their dollars are paying for and come meet the people who serve them.
So do you advertise that? I do a lot of work with the volunteer, garlic festival, but I've never known that we had a local council there, which needs a vital...
We, we try. We could always do better. So I'll, I'll kind of do it, and she can help and us spread the word. Because we try to make sure that North Plains knows that they can come on down and get a hat and get some fire safety education.
I've had that too. And then right before that is National Maya.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe that's something you can get. National Maya, pass that paper for local council.
Yeah, as long as we're listening, we try to enjoy potential and out risks. And having cities that we serve, we try to, it's one of those to make sure that we're a joke, a law enforcement partner. But if there's more ways you can help us promote what we're doing at the fire station, we'd very appreciate it.
Pretty good. It's June 6th is our ice cream session, which is still on Easter. Maybe you have it up there.
I think it, you guys don't look in the description. Just heard some, is there going to be ice cream here?
Slime is on the zip call. Cancer Paven. Were you done with your presentation?
It's starting soon.
Cancer Paven, do you have any questions?
No, I just had one quick question. Can you tell me where Station 68 is based out of?
Station 68 is our north Baphine Station. It's where one of our trucks is housed.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anyone else? One more question. I had a question about the renovation. You mentioned that Station 17 is going to be renovated, or where? Just curious.
Yeah, we have a number of stations that are on our list from the bond to be updated and need updating. And Station 17 is on that. I'm not quite sure what the timeline is right now, but I know it's on the list as we're working through. Right now, our priorities are a couple of stations that we need to completely get rid of and rebuild. Station 35, for instance, in King City is the top of our list, as we've been trying to actually update that for a while. But we have a number of stations that include 17 that will be eventually renovated using those bond funds.
I got my feet wet. It's a great opportunity to... Sort of thing. It's on some VMS.
It is, yeah. Our fire chief supports that so much that he wants to start trying to do it twice a year now because it's a great opportunity for our community leaders to get involved and come put on some turnouts and drive an engine and do all the things that the mayor participated in. So that invitation is open if anybody's interested. Just let myself or not.
Any other comments or questions? We appreciate it. Sharing this really important... Pop in and give us enough day long.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. We have two resolutions this evening. The first resolution, number 260, on 1218, one just triggered by G8. Dustin.
Mayor, Council, and for everybody in law behind me and Dustin, we have a public works director of the city of North Plains. So if it's hard to believe, I'm a mayor here. All right, this is my first resolution that I could sit at council. So wish me luck on this. It should, it should be pretty easy because it's a formalization of an informal agreement that we already have in place with TDWD. And so hopefully you all read a little bit of the resolution to staff report, and I'll just kind of briefly mention what's going on. We've been out without an official in-house DRC that's a direct responsible charge for our water system since before I was here with our past, not the, but the retirement of the previous public works director. And so TDWD has been formally filling in that role since then, and they've done some other things to help out the city. As you know, we're fairly small but mighty staff. And so that is also, I learned today that our small and mighty staff got even smaller because TDWD pushed, oh my gosh. So that's just a seasonal help. So this is all the more reason to have a resolution like this be passed because we do need a lot of help from time to time. So one thing that TDWD also does is help us with our status system, and they help us with emergency events around the city when we need it, when we need extra manpower. And so with this resolution, it just formalizes what we already have an agreement with them. And if there's any questions, I am open at the moment.
Counselor Spun, Dave, and Counselor Sheldon.
So for a $25,000 a year, helping the state system with just the treatment program, what kind of help are they giving that you can't do in-house? Maybe they're not licensed for it, or maybe they're not certified? Is that what it is? It wasn't even certified?
Well, the $25,000 isn't just for the states. That's for all the help that we receive from TDWD. This past year was actually a little bit more. Like, we're only looking at spending the Navy about $25,000 a year on a contract basis and consult type basis with them. And we spent a little bit extra on the status system this year because of some of the issues that we have come at pump station one and getting our emergency generator back in place. And just, we do not have the experience and the basic personnel to be able to do that in-house. And we had to either get TDWD or get someone with Portland engineering to do that. And TDWD has a very good networking place to be able to do those things for us. As far as... This year is out of the norm because there are some things that were also set up that hadn't been set up previously, and I don't expect that to be a continuing basis. And even then, if we do go over that $25,000 threshold, that's an agreement that I have, that we have with TDWD to kind of, you know, make sure that we're not going over that without first getting into what those terms are.
So it's a big list of billable hours of the trucks and so on. How much do we actually use? Is that... First, we are a teenager. And for the last year, yes, we went 3,000, but a lot of that was actual costs that were one-time costs that should have been done previously, but we had to catch up with that. Now that those costs are done, the estimate is to be about $25,000 a year. Can we do a message from there? Is that the flat rate that's best reassured positive? Do they, we have that angle?
It's more of an estimate, and especially as we are shorting through, we need to get other agreements from time to time. It's just there as a, it's not like a minimum. It's more of a guide.
Are we using for like... Basically, every day, process work? When that, or do you have it in us? We use it only for emergencies.
They're, they are doing the DRC services, which is mostly more of a formality, kind of signing everything up between in-house and air. But they make sure that we are doing the right things on the administrative level, on the actual maintenance level. They're holding our flushing, our flushing system, our valve inspection system. Basically, anything dealing with the water distribution system, between inspections, actual physical hands-on maintenance, they were out here during the, I mean, you kind of mentioned the snowstorm there, and we came for the major leak. And our, our status system actually caught that, that one of the leaks, and we were out there looking for it. The status system doesn't do pinpoint exactly where it is. It just say, hey, we have an issue going on. Now we got to look for it. And so we had TDWD also out with our crew, helping find where that one break was. And so they, they come and assist us in those kinds of things. And if our tractor truck is down, they'll come out and they'll help us with those services as well. There's a lot of services that they can do, and they have helped us with in the past year.
Yeah, I see that, but they can do everything under the sun. I'm just wondering, how much of it are we relying on them versus in-house? Or our typical process based, our daily operations, how much are we relying on the outside end? That's my question.
If we're looking at a percentage of us doing in-house and TDWD helping us, I would say we're doing a good maybe 75 to 80% in-house. But it's not a lot that TDWD is doing, other than assisting our normal operations.
Okay, thanks, Dustin. And I get it. I've been through it, and the resolution looks good to me. Only one point that I was a little confused about. When I think about it, I'm thinking about it every time, right? So we're getting there, but one of the, one of the sentences, I think it was in the second paragraph. I think I was a little confused because I know Javier recently passed. Did he recently pass? Okay, so it says next one to two years. I'm thinking, what's the timeline to have him in the DRC? And then you're going to be following up. It just was a little confusing as one to two years. Who'd won, or would it be one, then a two year, now two? What's the timeline to get him out? Four months from now, or six months from now?
The one to two years is more of an estimate. Hopefully we can be able to transfer, since Javier already has his distributor due, he's eligible to become our DRC. Hopefully, within the next six to 12 months at the earliest, we can be able to do that transfer. But we also have a number of things that are going on in the city, especially our water system survey, our five-year water system survey that TDWD is going to actually help us. We have a lot of policies and procedures that we need to update, an emergency response plan that we need to update. And to be able to do that, we're all going to be on the same page. And with that, it's probably going to take us about six months to a year to really figure out what we need to do and have the DRC get into the mini green win. And with, within the next year or two, it's possible we might have three DRCs with myself included as I get time to be able to pass that exam as well or that certification as well.
All right, that's just a clarification. We're just a little, little cloud here.
Counselor Paven?
No questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a recommendation by counsel?
Well, I move for approval, resolution number 2261, to approve intergovernmental agreement with Twalton Valley Water District for an operational support services.
Do I have a second? All right, I have a first and a second discussion. I do just say... I do just say implication in section two. It says T V D S. So just want to make sure that that gets corrected. Second, we're, uh, section two, on the actual. Okay. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all must pay their say aye. Move on. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, watching carry. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
All right, next up, you have resolution, I'm sorry, this way of resolution two two six two, interim city manager, management agreement.
You know, Mayor, you know, the water system moving taken care of, that's important to me. But as everyone knows by now, I'll be leaving the city's employment towards the end of this month. And in that time period, we'll search for new city manager. Rob Drake has agreed to serve as interim city manager for a period of about six months. I know most everyone in the city council knows Rob, has been known for quite a long time. Rob has a history on Washington County, but is not only mayor of Bearton for several terms and the city councillor in Cornelius for over ten years. He also served interim stint in Teluk and Carlton, so he knows small towns, he knows a lot of issues that North Plains is dealing with. He's led the C C L S library levy committee for a number of periods. So he's definitely familiar with the library system, the library will be going through a levy renewal period in twenty twenty-five. So Rob will help step into some of my shoes for some of that work and work alongside Robin. Rob spent some time in the office for several hours this month, so everyone in the staff has really got the chance to know him and thankful folks will look forward to working with him. Again, this agreement would be for six months temporary. His first charge would be to, to work with the recruiter for permanent replacement of a, of a city manager. And we're hoping to have a recruitment, a proposal to the council at the next meeting on the twentieth, so Rob will appear for that. This first date would be the twentieth for a period of six months, no more than six months to end November twentieth. If a city manager is found before then and his services are, are deemed no longer needed, he's agreed to, to shorten that whatever, whatever, whatever the city council needs in that time period. So the agreement is attached as included A to the resolution two two six two. If you have any questions about it or about Rob, you know.
Counselor Maven, I'll start with you.
Yeah, you know, I was pleasantly surprised to see Rob on the agenda and I've worked with him in the past and I am in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or any? If not, I'll entertain any motion.
I'll move adopt, to adopt resolution number two two six two to approve an agreement with Mr. Rob Drake. For services in interim city manager for up to six months.
All right, we have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all must pay their say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, watching carry. Thank you. Ten minutes, we have ordinance number four ninety-four, this is the city file, T A two four dash two five, sign code text amendment. Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, city councilors, Steve Moore, planning manager for the city. We're working on getting a PowerPoint up here real quick and I'll walk you through that. You, you've seen it before, but there are a couple extra slides to share with you, so I'll do that. And then I might, since there are some folks in the audience here that were not at the planning commission meeting, I might just walk through the whole amendment. So everybody can get familiar with that. The next slide. So this slide here is showing you really what we've covered with the sign code text amendment. And as you can see, we essentially touched every section except for one. And that's the very, it's not four sixteen, there's another section below four sixteen that we did not do anything to. So it was a very extensive sign code amendment. And we did touch many of the sections that are within the sign code. Next slide. We touched on this with your work session, but some of the new things that came into the sign code in the definition sections had to do with air blown signs, your, your banner type attention flags. We did not have anything in the code we had before. We also updated many of the definitions and like I said, since we have some reports here, I'll walk through that here in a minute. Next slide. As you can see, we already have some of these type of signs in the city. There, there are in a lot of different locations, but these are some, some locations that people are probably familiar with. So it's nice that we are trying, starting to address these because they are becoming more prolific in town. Next slide. Another thing that we added to the sign code is a section for exempt signs. And these signs are twofold. One of the exempt type of signs that we have is for, the type of sign is that you generally see at like a, at a high school baseball field or something like that, where you have your sponsors up on the outfield. Signs and windows, other things like that, that really don't really require a sign permit. The other ones that we've exempted have to do with basically your government signs, your directional signs, your speed limit signs, your wave finding signs, things of the nature that you put in a right of way to help people navigate through your city and understand where hazards are or other type of things that you need to be aware of as you're driving. So we've exempted those signs from requiring a sign permit now. Next slide. Something we did add to the commercial zone that was not there before is rooftop signs. So the planning commission determined that there could be a need for some rooftop signs in the C two zone as the city grows. And then some people may be off the beaten path a little bit, so there might be a need to have a sign on top of the roof to get folks' attention. So the planning commission decided to bring rooftop signs into the C two zone. That was a big change there for the C two zone. Next slide. The big change that we have for the M one and M two signs was to bring back pole signs. So pole signs were not allowed under the old code. With this proposed amendment, in the M one and M two zone, you would now be allowed to have a pole sign. And the planning commission's rationale for that was when you go along West Union, there are lots that are off West Union. They sit back quite a distance from West Union and it's hard for them to be seen. So the planning commission thought it would be a good idea to allow those companies to have a pole sign so people could get a better idea of where they're located. So they have proposed to allow that now in the M one and M two zones. Next slide. As a result of the recommendation that came from the planning commission, they did have a couple changes that they proposed. The first change had to do with the temporary political signs. And so in the top section there where it's highlighted in blue, that was the original proposed language. And then below that is the language that the planning commission recommended at their last meeting. And so it basically says the same thing, but in a more condensed way. So they added the underline, they took out the, the public and then added cycle. And they took out everything else that was in their original recommendation. So that's, that's what you have before you tonight, that's the proposal for temporary signs, the one in the bottom there is how it's written up today. Next slide. There's also a typo in the M two, it said M T dash two and not M two, so we updated that. So now it just resets M two the way it should. There is also a little bit of concern about when we're doing enforcement or trying to remove an abandoned sign, who was the correct person to send a collection to? And Commissioner Levate believed that the assessor's office wasn't the correct location. So I reached out to the assessor's office, they said, this is something they can do actually through a special assessment. But it is very complicated and it is costly. We, we have to pay for the special assessment to have it put onto the property and maintain that special assessment as an annual fee for that. And so if you, if you go to the next slide and those conversations, what we determined, it would be better to just do it the way we do when we put a lien on someone's property. For example, when we have a property that's overgrown or something that we might have to go in and mow. We would put a lien onto that property if they don't reimburse us for the work that we did to, to mow that lawn. We're going to address abandoned signs in the same fashion. We'll recommend them to the, to the city recorder for lien assessment against the property that the sign is located on. So those are the three changes that came from the planning commission meeting last month. And if you go to the next slide. The conclusion here is this was the city council to hold the first reading tonight of these proposed amendments, ordinance four ninety-four. And tonight you could recommend approval of that as part of your ordinance. Or you could approve with some conditions to add to the proposal, or you could deny the text amendment. This is a very necessary text amendment, I believe, in staff's view because the code is a little dated. So we certainly do recommend that the council approves the first reading of ordinance four ninety-four. Next slide. And with that, I can take some questions. And if you would like, Mayor, I can also walk through the whole breadth of the sign code text amendment just for the folks in the audience, if you would like to do that.
Do you know the cost of moving a sign? I mean, it varies, is that a minimum charge or is it, I mean, it depends with the signage, right? So I have to go back, I mean, so that one.
Are you talking?
Yeah, how do you know the cost?
For like an abandoned sign?
Right.
It would be just, the cost would come through, we would probably have to hire our contractor depending on the type of a sign. I mean, it could be a sign where we need some type of a crane to get up there to remove it. So it would just be the bill that we receive from the company to remove the sign. But again, you know, it's all case by case, it's sign dependent, right? So that's kind of the worst case scenario is a sign that we couldn't remove physically ourselves, we need some help to get it done. If it's a sign that we could remove, we would just do it probably on an hourly basis, based on the public work staff's time that it took to remove that sign and quantify that on an hourly basis. To the property to, to pay and then if they did not pay, we would leave that amount against the property.
Would you repeat your questions? Would you like to explain?
I, I'm happy to walk through the whole breadth of the sign code amendments that we have proposed because there are some folks that weren't here at the planning commission meeting. So I showed you kind of the, the highlights, but if you'd like, I'm happy to walk through the whole thing. We, we have it up here and I can do that pretty quickly.
Um, sure.
Just give us one second. Since we had to switch computers and stuff, I had to email the staff to, to build, so Bill has to grab it for me.
You want to try to be similar to me because that, that will be found on the, I mean, same here, you know. It is a bit more open. No. We're single. It should be, it should be part of the agenda. So that's what I'm hoping to, I think it's up high. If I go to the zoom, that should be one that's much recovered and then. What, what you do? Do you know where, where's, where's, where's the, because it's pretty difficult.
Um, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just couldn't hear the situation.
Yeah.
No, it's.
Yeah, the last one. Okay, thanks, everybody, for your patience. We're going to blow this up a little bit too, so it's not easier to see. Thank you. All right, Google screen, right, jump to. There. So I'll just walk everybody through this real quick so you can kind of see where we made changes to the sign code. I'm sorry, it's a little hard for everybody to see that, but I'll, I'll try and do my best to explain everything to you. So what we did with the abandoned signs is we didn't have much of a definition there before. So we essentially brought in a whole new definition for what constitutes an abandoned sign. And we indicated basically how that's going to look in terms of, you know, once it's been out of use for a certain amount of time, we will reach out to folks to let them know that we would like it removed. And then if nothing happens within a certain amount of time, then we would take action ourselves to have the sign removed. We added a definition for the air blown signs, as I mentioned, so now we have that. We also added imagery to the definition section to help folks better understand what we're talking about. If you want to scroll down, we brought in the attention flags. Again, something that we're seeing more and more, but did not have been addressed in the sign code. I'm going to scroll down a little more. So we, we added the changeable signs, which is just kind of out of the picture there. But we also deleted column signs because the problem with the column signs is it mirrored the pole sign definition. They were essentially the same thing, the way it was defined in our code. So we took care of the duplication and decided to delete the column signs. And then there were some disciplinary things that the planning commission wanted updated. They didn't like, like, for example, in electric message science, that, that second one there was all capitalized. They thought that that was unnecessary. So anywhere in the sign code, we have those all caps kind of buried into the middle of the definition. We changed that to just standard quote. So you'll see some changes like that in the definition section. We also added some language to clarify what the frontage of a property is, so people understood how we look at the frontage. And then, you know, we took and added planning manager to that one definition because now we have a planning manager. We did not have a planning manager before, so it was the city manager that was going to make that call. So we took the city manager out and then added planning managers. And the monument signs, we added some, some pictures to help people better understand what a monument sign is. It just seemed as we were working on these text amendments, you know, one of the things jurisdictions do a lot of this, we look at what our other coworkers are doing in other jurisdictions, you know, how they address some of these situations. And one of the things that we saw is the better sign codes had imagery to help people understand what, what we need when we're talking about these type of signs. And so we thought that was a really good thing to do and so we expected to do it ourselves, but images in for some of these definitions. We updated the mural language a little bit. There's a redundancies in there and just kind of calling everything a mural, so we added some additional language to help people understand where we don't want those things. And then on the pole signs, let's scroll down a little bit. We updated that whole definition basically because we got rid of the column signs and added some imagery there too to help explain what would be a, a pole sign. So you can see it can be an individual pole, it can be two poles or essentially a column. But all of those now are considered a pole sign under our definition. We did a little bit more cleanup of some language there. And then for projection signs, we added some imagery, again, to help people understand. One of the tough things with putting imagery into the code is we want to be neutral. We don't want to promote one business over another. So it's very challenging to find imagery out there that can share a sign that doesn't, doesn't promote a business. So we, we got pizza and we got the big, we, we thought that that was pretty neutral. And then the hotel signs, we also updated the definition there and added some imagery as well. The sign area, we added some language. And then we also added some information on how we measure signs. And we tried to make some clarity on that. We get a lot of questions on that actually, on how we measure area of signs. Sign companies are very good. Uh, sign companies are very good at knowing how to do this, but every jurisdiction does it a little bit differently. So it's good to have a little clarification in there for those folks. Uh, go ahead, scroll down. Uh, that's all the same there. Uh, we just cleaned up the temporary signs again, just a little bit of um, font changes there. And then on the signs, we added some um, some language to that. And then the wall signs, we brought in some imagery. Uh, wave finding signs, we basically updated um, the the whole definition. And then window signs, we updated the whole definition for that as well. Um, so that's really the extent of the definitions that we updated. Um, like I mentioned in the other presentation, we added this section to the code, the exempt signs. And as I indicated, these are largely for your governmental signs and rightaways. And for, you know, those type of things you see uh, a a school field, uh, maybe in a window, um, like I said, scoreboards. Um, those type of things, we're going to exempt from requiring a sign permit. Um, they seem to be in the uh, community's best interest to have um, those uh, sponsors uh, sponsor these um, programs. So we don't want to hinder their ability to put a sign up and show their support for the local uh, groups here that that participate in sports or whatnot. Um, and so when we did this section, when we added this section, every section below that had to be updated. That's why you see a little number change on each one, uh, because we added that section, everything below that now had to get uh, bumped up one number. Um, so that all changed as it rolls through the code. Um, in terms of residential permitted signs, we didn't change anything, we just took the column signs out, since we deleted that definition. Um, signs and commercial zones, um, the big change there was really for um, excuse me, for the monument sign, we uh, increased. Go down a little bit more. So thank you there. In the, in the C two zone, um, and I'll just help this for everybody uh, in the audience here. Uh, we have two commercial zones, we have the C one zone and the C two zone. Uh, the C one zone is only located on Commercial Street in the downtown core. Uh, and the C two zone is only located along Blanco, between the highway and Commercial Street. There is a little bit more like where Garberino is, that is the C two zone. So there's a little couple spots where we also have the C two, but primarily it's along Blanco. Um, and what we did for that one is we um, we updated the uh, monument signs. So we went from thirty-two square feet to forty square feet, and we put a maximum height on a monument sign of being eight feet. And then we also brought in roof signs uh, to the C two zone. So those are the big changes for the commercial zone, uh, before we go down. Um, and then we, we took roof signs out of being uh, a sign that you can't have in the C two zone, because now we put that in. Signs in the neighborhood community zone, we did not change anything, uh, other than just uh, the numbering that needed to be updated. Uh, institutional zone was the same, uh, just the numbering. Uh, signs in the industrial zone, that was another area where we added quite a few uh, changes. Um, we updated um, again, the the wall sign requirements. One of the things we were seeing for some of the larger buildings along uh, West Union was um, our sign code was a little out of touch with the size of the buildings that were being built over there. So you could only, you could build a large building in the industrial zone, but you could only get a thirty-two square foot sign to go on the building. So it was really proportionally just out of whack there a little bit. And so we looked at some other jurisdictions, and we found that um, a hundred and fifty square feet um, is pretty much the standard for these larger industrial buildings. Uh, so we have it to not exceed a hundred and fifty square feet, uh, or ten percent of the wall area. So whatever one is, is that number, it can be um, ten percent or up to a hundred and fifty, but not more than a hundred and fifty. And then we also um, brought in roof signs to the industrial zone. Um, just a second here. And then we also brought in pole signs to um, just the M two zone. So the M one zone, it did not uh, get that um, update, just the M two. Uh, again, and that's primarily everything along um, West Union is where that M two zone is. The M one zone is primarily off of Commercial, uh, kind of behind it, where you have um, Globeway Electric, and uh, some of those like businesses back off of Commercial. Next. Um, these are the temporary signs, I shared that with you um, in the slides earlier. There was a minor change that the uh, planning commission recommended, but I think it still achieves the underlying objective of what the previous language um, had. So it's still, still capturing the intent of what they did the first time, I think it's just a little cleaner now, not quite as wordy. Scroll down a little bit. Um, really, the next major change comes at um, the um, enforcement arm here, the abandoned signs. And uh, you've all seen this before, but again, the big change, um, and it's not reflected in this, but it is reflected in your clean version that you have as part of your ordinance, where it's not the county assessor we're sending it to, we're going to go the route of the city reporter um, to report a lien on the property. So I apologize that it's not updated in this document here, but it is updated in your clean version, that's a part of your uh, ordinance document tonight. Um, and that's, that's really all I have um, for the sign code amendments, and I'll come over to you, Mayor. Thank you for your questions.
Um, thank you, Steve, uh, just for clarity, um, so folks probably don't understand that C and M, if you, C stands for? Would you please uh, just define what the C and and C one and C two stands for? And the M and the M one stands for just?
Yes, yes, um. So generally, um. Been in there, does it? Uh.
I think you.
We have two commercial zones, um, the C one zone is really a downtown type of a commercial zone. Um, the C two is more of a general commercial zone, it's a little broader, allows for more uses than the C one would. Um, so for example, in the C two, you could um, you could get like a, an auto business there, you could get um, um, gosh, I can't even remember all the uses off the top of my head, daycare, you can get um,
Drive thru.
Drive-throughs, um, all your kind of stuff that you're used to seeing along uh, Blanco right now, would be the type of uses that would be allowed there. Really, a big difference between C two and C one is, the city manager was whispering in my ears, you cannot do drive-throughs in the C one zone. Um, you know, in the C one zone, we kind of anticipate seeing more uh, zero lot line type development, you know, in a downtown type setting, you know, where the buildings kind of back up to one another, so you don't have that opportunity for a drive-through type of situation. So um, that's really a big difference. Uh, and then, you know, the C one zone also incorporates all the um, design review standards that the city recently adopted as part of the downtown improvement plan. So there are more design standards in the C one zone for the building facade and and their appearance than you would find in the general commercial zone. So um, thus the big difference between our commercial zones, um, the M one and the M two. Um, the M one zone is a light industrial zone, uh, so you won't see your really intense industrial uses in the M one zone. And the M two is more of a general or heavy industrial zone. And uh, as I indicated, you primarily see the M two if along West Union, on the north side of West Union, as well as um, in downtown, um, where um, Oregon Canadian is located. They're all C two or M two as well. And then as you push behind the south of um, Oregon Canadian, you get into a couple pockets of the the M one, which is where um, I don't remember any of that, now Globe Electric is located, and the food processing plant over there, they're all in the um, M one. So does does that help answer your question?
Yeah, and then the IP, IPU zone is the institutional zone. And then the NC, so we use those acronyms, we know what they are. And just to be clear that, keeps in the audience and that, understand what those acting, you know, um, those mean, so IPU is the institutional zone, and then the NC is the.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Um.
That's, that's just clarity on those, those, how those words.
Sure, sure, that's a great point. Obviously, we get used to our acronyms, and they just roll up our tongue, and we forget that everybody else does it good in our planning world, right? Useful clarification of what we're talking about here. Uh, the um, the institutional zone is kind of what you would imagine, it's really for um, civic and and um, religious type purposes is where you would see that zone well, the most, so we have it, um, our churches are 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 also institutional. Um, the city properties are though institutional, um, and that's really the only places you'll see that, and and the fire station as well. Um, and and the um, and the um, life, I mean, the um, the um, post office is also has that zoning. So it's very limited, uh, some of the places that you would expect to see it. Um, and then the NC zone is um, a, is a, it's kind of a master planning zone, it's a residential zone, it's answered neighborhood community. Um, there's only two places in the city where this uh, zone is applied, and it has to do with the new subdivision that have come into the city at Sunset Ridge and Brinhoe. Uh, those are the only properties in the city that have that zoning designation. And it's really because when those properties came online through a UDB expansion process, they were required to master plan those properties. Um, they were large properties, where we wanted to have a good idea of how whole site was gonna be developed. And that NC zoning gave us the ability to require that master plan, so we could look at the whole property in its entirety versus uh, just a little bit at a time. Um, and so that's really what that zones. And it's a broad zone, it covers a lot of different things, but uh, again, we only have it in two locations.
Cool, thank you, Steve, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments, um, Councilperson, or make sure you remember your, your questions are answered?
No, thank you.
There are no questions, um, what's to say in the council?
I'm, the screen, supporting our data, sign code, here, and commission.
I'm just doing the same. My first, to Page, second, and vice, Counselor Smith, any discussion?
I didn't see a typographical error. I think it was fifty-four seventy-nine, I can't imagine it makes any difference, but gets corrected and what we're accepting it, you can't think of it. It's gonna require an act of the council, it's under mural, it's in uh, I think it's in the first paragraph, first sentence, the term uh, relates to, should relate to fall and spill plate. That I've been through that thing, it's pretty clean, I remember going through prior revision of the code, and I think it's also very clear. And uh, so I don't have any objections, that'd be finally a point of discussion.
And there's also, uh, it was brought to my attention, there's also a, an error in the actual ordinance, it's got a date of June second twenty twenty-four for um, public comment at a meeting, which obviously we haven't gotten there yet, so I took a note down to get that corrected before the second. And, and, thank you. Yeah, another second.
Okay. Yeah, uh, Steve.
Yes.
Under mural, that's what it is section.
I I just saw that, but yes, thank you.
Uh, signs and commercial zones is number J. I can see a little bit. I'm fine. Oh, uh, I, one monument sign. I don't know if I need to. Anyway, it's about a mural, the sign, so when you do these paintings downtown, like on Oregon Canadian, are those considered murals or paintings?
Mural.
Mural, so that fits in that description of any size, which is great.
Yes, we, we do not have a size limit on a mural.
Okay, good.
Um, it's interesting, our code talks about having a a mural committee, um, which we don't at the moment. Uh, and so the decisions fell to staff at that point. Um, and I understand that that's how the first murals uh, went up on those um, buildings around um, Commercial and Main.
Yes.
Um, and then when um, Oregon Canadian decided that they wanted to do some murals, um, they came in and shared their uh, scope of work that they wanted to do on those buildings there. So uh, we approved them kind of in a phase, because they had a, they started in summer, got the one done that you see right now, but they also want to continue to the west and do another addition to that, and so we approved approved them for the whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any more discussion? So again, we have a first by Councilman Page, second by Counselor Smith. None more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Carry no, I don't think carry. So, my reading, number four ninety. Page is in, in the city council, the city of Long Mains, Oregon, implementing an amendment to text the zoning. Thank you. Moving on, on our agenda, it's for seven, okay.
Yes, we need to approve the first reading.
First reading. Thank you.
I'll move it. First reading, uh, ordinance number four, I think, nine.
Second.
Second, discussion. Very none, all those in favor say aye. And say nay. Very none, I don't think carry. Thank you, thank you, Lord. All right. City manager.
Now, Mayor, I don't have a lot to add, um, this hour of the evening. Uh, I'm sorry, it was already included in the report, just a quick note, in case it doesn't come up later, um. We have day, is it Saturday, it's just like last year, it's gonna be a warm one. We got Saint Edward's Church, and uh, they've been great, or, it's as well, County. Um, I, I want to move real quickly to a memo that's included at point four, and then into that, have have any answering questions? I had a pull-up on my iPad, which died, but this is a great opportunity, because the memo itself, it's written by Bill, who's working on it. And it's an agreement we have with a uh, a property owner in town, is they're closing this property. It's a, it's a financing agreement of a TDT, first of its kind of the city. It's something we have the ability to do, it's something other jurisdictions do, and it's really just administrative decision, but we wanted to let the council know what bankroll financing is, in particular, this piece of property, because it's, it's pretty much gonna be the largest transportation development tax um, painted probably the cities received in history, not not in aggregate, these subdivisions will will do more for one piece of property, for sure, the biggest. So um, that presented some questions from the property owner, and Bill did a good job looking through the attorney. So Bill, if you want to take a couple minutes and just explain um, this agreement, and how we came across the terms, and uh, and the, the payment schedule, all that.
Sure, thank you, Andy. Um, you didn't know, no, correct, um, the, the, the development of the ten acres on, south, um, ten acres of um, what we all kind of collectively call our west property, right on West Union Road. Um, that, that project is right on the verge of building permit. Um, but the transportation development tax that we collect, it's a county uh, tax um, at the building permit time, typically, not always, but typically, um, we collect it at the same time as STC's, um, and other fees. But in this case, the TDT is going to be about one point one million dollars. And it will indeed be the single biggest one, a single biggest TDT that's levied on one single property. Uh, but under Washington County ordinance, the county has chosen that in the case of the TDT, because it's really their tax we collect it, and do project, the county approved project, county listed projects with it. Um, but the county has chosen to allow development interests to basically negotiate an installment payment plan. If the fee is big enough, it's non-residential, and it's big enough, um, the development interest can can have an installment, negotiate an installment plan. Um, so we have a draft agreement in place that will be finalized prior to building occupancy certi- certification by the county. Um, that would be the condition at the final stage of this, there has to be a finalized agreement in place. But as is um, the, the development of that property, the company that actually will close on buying the property after the building permit is issued, um, they will take seven years to pay that to us, um, pay that back, pay that off. Um, and at an interest rate of five point three percent annually, um, the city will will take in about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the amortization schedule, about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in interest, in addition to the one point one million dollar TDT being paid, about ninety-five, ninety-six thousand dollars payments twice a year, for seven years. Um, and so, the city will be taking over quite a bit of money, additional interest. Um, and we're structuring it um, so that the agreement, you know, basically rides with the property. Um, this is a bit of a complicated development project, with somebody buying the land, um, building the pro- project, a different company leasing uh, the building, and then a user inside that is not the company that's leasing the building. But we're having it structured, we work with um, with BEH, we work with city attorney, we'll be sure that we have documented is that, assure uh, guaranteed, guaranteed payments. So um, it's a first of its kind, and we just kind of run through that.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah, how's that, the, that figure out for cost? What, what, where does that cost come from?
Great question. So basically, it ultimately comes from the size of the building. This building is going to be just over two hundred thousand.